And then that same night, I was probably on fire.
Jed's back.
And then we did it all again two years later.
Jed Dolm.
And then again, just because of the changes that was going on in the state and all that.
Well, you want to make it better or a lot more than that?
It's gonna be a while. Maybe these, these, uh, these guys will be in the business and moving things along too, which is probably okay. I mean, they're not gonna want to be here all night either, so hey, keep, keep things moving.
Well, dude is from...
A local?
Yeah, I'll catch him this week.
Okay. I think so. Yeah. I believe, I think so. Yes. They wait. Yep. I think it's three months or six months.
Let's go. We'll stick to it, but it moves. Yeah. All the two there, huh? Probably doesn't move often.
That's, that's Bayside. Bayside, yeah. Bayside, yeah, self said.
Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. It is May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. More than twenty-four hours in advance of tonight's meeting. Notice the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Lisa, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. I invite you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We recognize a full quorum of our Common Council here with us tonight. Thank you to all of our guests who are here tonight. Uh, we're gonna turn this over to Chief Gearing for a pinning of the badge ceremony for Joey Baumann, Jack Omer, and TJ Getz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There you go. And Council, I appreciate you giving us the time to introduce our three newest officers. Joey, Jack, TJ, please step forward. Joey, Jack, and TJ were actually hired in, uh, early January of this year and have spent the last, uh, five and a half months at Waukesha County Technical College. Ah, there you go. I love it. Uh, Waukesha, uh, area Technical College where they completed recruit school. Lieutenant McAndrews, Captain Grinwald, and I were very honored to, uh, be invited by their families and our recruits, uh, to help celebrate on May eighth their graduation. Their instructors spoke, uh, very highly of them. They have a bond now for the rest of their careers, having gone through that experience together, and we're really happy to have them finally be able to be put to work. And they have been working already. Just a couple of quick notes. Uh, Joey is a local, uh, young man, uh, graduated from West Bend West. Probably one of the last times we'll get to say this. He, uh, earned his associate's degree at University of Washington County, University of Milwaukee, Washington County, before the campus closed. A big ball player through high school, but one of the things that we're most proud of is, uh, he credits his brief, brief deployment, but a deployment nonetheless with our West Bend Cadet Program is really, uh, cementing the fact that he wanted to protect and serve our community. So we're glad we had that and we're glad that program continues to exist. Jack went to, uh, Cedarburg High School. After high school, did a four-year stint, full, uh, duty, active duty with the United States Marine Corps. Thanks for your service, Jack. Had some pretty interesting stories he's gonna share with our team about his, uh, his duties as a military police officer stationed on the East Coast with some pretty high-end stuff. We're, we're excited to hear more about that. When, after discharge, I went to University of Milwaukee where he earned his associate's degree and, uh, again, and joins us here today. Thanks, Jack. TJ had a little bit of a different route. TJ was born and raised in the state of Washington, where he, uh, attended Eatonville High School. I'll be honest, I had to Google that, but I did. Uh, it's between Seattle and Portland. After he graduated from Eatonville, he went to Pacific University where he earned his bachelor's degree and has been working in Chief's hometown of Davenport, uh, as a orthopedic specialist. Uh, his, um, his wife, Maddie, uh, just very recently married. His wife, uh, joining the medical profession here in West Bend. That's what brings them here. And we're glad to, uh, to meet TJ and have him become part of our team as well. So I'll give you Joey Ba- Officer Baumann, Officer Omer, Officer Getz. As is our tradition, we will celebrate the officers, but we're also going to celebrate their families tonight. So moms, dads, and significant others, if you could come forward, please. Gentlemen, make a hole so they can stand behind you. So it is, uh, extremely important for us to take a moment to, uh, think and honor their families. Their families are the people who have been coach, guide, mentoring them for the last twenty-plus years, to show them the importance of a life of service, to show them the importance of a life of purpose. So families, thank you for all you've done to make these fine young men and to inspire them to live that life of service. Thank you very much. It's not over, though. Policing can become very all-encompassing. It's not a job you punch out at the end of the day. It's in your life. And especially as young officers, it can take over your life. So you all, families, have homework. And that is to make sure that a piece of Officer Omer, Officer Getz, Officer Baumann remains. They stay whole people. They'll be better police officers when they're better people. So make them take that vacation, no matter how hard you have to try. Make sure they still do the things that they like to do and it makes them them. And it's going to be some work. I promise you that. It's going to be a little bit of work, but I don't think this crowd is afraid of any work. So to celebrate, uh, all three, uh, have selected their significant others to conduct the badge ceremony. So if you would now, please, Savannah... Nope, that, yep, you're good. Molly and Maddie. Well done. You're all too afraid to hurt them. Just stick that thing in. All right, how about a round of applause for our family of new officers? Everybody get the pictures they need? Okay. So family, thank you. Officers, I'll meet you over by the mayor, please.
Welcome to the team. Thank you for your service and, uh, welcome to the city of West Bend. Uh, Robbie, our, one of our police and fire commissioners, thank you for being here tonight. And, uh, you're all welcome to stay for our council meeting. I'm just kidding. Thank you very much for being here. Congratulations. Our council meeting is now in recess. I'm gonna call to order a meeting of the Licensing Board of the City of West Bend. Our first item of business is the Licensing Board Regular Meeting Minutes from May fifth.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is a bunch of, uh, license renewals, as you can see listed in the packet. Uh, we'll take items two, three, four, five, and six together. These are Class B Combo Liquor, Reserve Class B Combo Liquor, Class B Beer Liquor, Class B Beer and Class C Wine Liquor, Class A Combo Liquor License Renewals.
Motion to approve.
Second, second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Butchlick. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll take items seven and eight together. This is cigarette, tobacco, and electronic vaping license renewals and the antidote, new cigarette license period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Zingshaim. Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll take items nine, ten, and eleven. These are Massage Establish- Massage Establishment License Renewals, Fortified Health New Massage Establishment, I think that stands for, license period ending June thirtieth, and You Matter Massage and Wellness New Massage Establishment License Period Ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll take items twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. This is Amusement Arcade License Renewals, Amusement Device License Renewals, Racing House New Amusement Arcade License Application and Racing House New Amusement Device License Application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Zingshaim. Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And our last one is Secondhand Dealer License Renewals.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And our licensing board is adjourned.
I call to order a meeting of the Finance Committee. We have two agenda items this evening. The first one is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting, May fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim. Any additions, deletions, corrections? There being none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The second agenda item is Resolution Number Six, Accepting Walmart, Walmart Spark Good Grant. Chief Daring.
Thank you. I'll speak on behalf of, uh, Chief Noran and myself, uh, and the Fraternal Order of Police. Uh, we have a great partner in John Fitzgerald. Many of you recognize John. He's a manager at Walmart, but, uh, more importantly, in a better job. He's on our Crime Prevention Patrol, a strong, uh, partner of, for the Police Department, a part of our Police Department, and he always, uh, is on the lookout to advocate for us. Uh, we've received this grant several years running, thanks to John and Walmart. Uh, tonight, I ask you to accept a three thousand dollar grant. We'll be splitting it. It says two ways. It's actually three ways. Uh, one thousand going into Chief Noran and the Fire Department's Smoke and Carbon Monoxide Alarm Program, one thousand going into the Police Department's, um, Crime Prevention Fund, and one thousand that we will be, uh, working through finance to get to the Fraternal Order of Police's Shop With a Cop Program. I ask that you accept the funds and place them in the accounts noted.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Burkequist and Alderman Schmidt. Um, any comments, questions? I just have one. Thank you very much for your continued generosity and, and advocacy for our police officers, uh, and firefighters here in the city of West Bend. Uh, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. There being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as Chair.
Thank you. We'll reconvene our Common Council meeting. Our next item of business is the Common Council Regular Meeting Minutes on May fifth.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Schmidt. Any comments, questions, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our consent agenda is items two through eighteen in your packet. If you recall, uh, at our last meeting, a presentation by the owner of Oak and Hog, his contractor, uh, his attorney was here and the work that they're gonna be doing on that establishment. So now it's time, uh, to bring that forward for approval. We can certainly take any one of these items out of consent agenda and vote on it in, on its own if you'd like. Otherwise, uh, I'll look for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept consent agenda, items two through eighteen.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. A couple of, uh, mayoral appointments, um, tonight. The first one, I got a call from Tracy Sirwat that he would like to step down from the downtown bid board, uh, but in the same breath, asked if his wife could fill, uh, that seat. Uh, they are business partners together. They own several buildings downtown, and, uh, I thought it was a, a great idea. They, together, they still have a, a very big interest in our downtown bid, and so, uh, I, I know both of these two, uh, individuals personally. They're great people. So, um, I'm bringing, uh, this appointment request to you to put Rebecca Sirwat on the downtown bid board, um, replacing her husband, Tracy Sirwat.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Sternig. Any questions? All in favor, please signi- signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The next two appointments are for the same individual. It's, uh, uh, an appointment to put Jed Dolnick on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the next one is to put Jed Dolnick on the Plan Commission, um, replacing Chris Schmidt, who served in those two, uh, boards for several years. Chris Schmidt is no longer a resident of the city, and so that's why he is stepping down. And, uh, Jed Dolnick has served on the Plan Commission in the past. He was a very valuable member in the past and, uh, has frankly been asking if he could be back on the Plan Commission for quite some time now. And so, um, I wouldn't, I, just because someone is begging to be on a board or commission doesn't mean that they automatically get to be on one. But Jed is a, he was a very good Plan Commissioner back in the day, and so, uh, I look forward to inviting him back with your approval tonight. So I'll take the first one, the Board of Zoning Appeals, to put Jed Dolnick on that board.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Sparts. Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the next one is to put Jed Dolnick on the Plan Commission.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderman, uh, Burkequist, second by Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next is Resolution Number Eight, Amending the Traffic Manual of the City of West Bend. Chief.
Thank you. Alderman, uh, Schmidt and I reported on this at our last council meeting, our Traffic Safety Commission meeting, uh, from April twenty-eighth. Tonight, uh, we bring forward to you the four resolutions to add officially to the traffic manual, the changes that were approved by the Safety Commission. Uh, first is to lower the speed limit from, uh, for fifty-five to forty-five all the way to Rusko Road on River Road. Right now, it changes to forty-five shortly after the roundabout and then stays fifty-five down to PV. It's been extended to change to forty-five, uh, to Rusko Road. Second is to restrict some parking by the district based on sightlines and some issues, uh, with visibility, leaving their driveway, which was asked for by the district. Third is to add, add, uh, four-way stop at Water and Forest, mainly due to the great development that we see in that area has also restricted some sightlines. And finally, uh, traffic, uh, added to the traffic manual, the mid-block crossing for the county buildings, uh, on East Washington Street. Should also note, Director Newman reported today that the pedestrian, yield to pedestrian signs at, um, River and Decorah were installed today and should help us to improve the safety of that intersection.
Thanks, Chief. Uh, if you're following along at home, we're on page three forty-four of this packet, in case anyone wants to, uh, look at the, uh, actual, uh, changes. But I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Sparts. Schmidt, sorry. Sternig and Schmidt, Lisa. Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the Resolution Number Seven to provide services as a wireless nine-one-one PSAP Public Safety Answer Point. And this is on page three forty-six in your packet. Chief.
Thank you. Uh, this is a very exciting, uh, move forward in our implementation of the next generation nine-one-one. We will no longer, if you dial nine-one-one on a cell phone in the city, you know, initially, now it goes to the county. It's triaged and then forwarded. There's a gap in service provided. Uh, through a lot of conversations with the Sheriff's Department, some formal letters back and forth. Uh, Sheriff Schulteis has agreed with my request to release the, um, cellular nine-one-one phone calls to our PSAP and is asking that you consider naming, in accordance with state statute, uh, the City of West Bend Dispatch Center as the Wireless Nine-One-One PSAP Public Safety Answering Point for West Bend. Washington County will become a secondary answering point for nine-one-one calls. This is after a tremendous amount of work by our department, specifically Captain Grinwald and his team in dispatch, our IT department working to implement next generation nine-one-one, which we hope to see go live actually later this month with the passing of this resolution. It's a very standard step in the release of those nine-one-one calls, and thank you, Captain Grinwald, and all the team in dispatch and IT for your work on this.
Thanks, Chief. I'll entertain a motion and then we can help open it up for questions, discussion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Burkequist and Alderman Sternig. Any comments, questions, discussion? Alderman Schmidt.
Uh, the, is there a cost associated with this and implementing this? And has this been already, or has this been budgeted already?
Yeah, what you have in front of you tonight is the formal release of the nine-one-one calls. Our next gen, we've fully funded the next generation transition, uh, partially from a grant from the state of Wisconsin. Remember, several, twenty twenty-two, actually. Uh, we received a grant from the Governor's Office and utilized that to fund the first portion of the transition, and this, uh, body supported the second transition. We've done it with tremendous cost savings. Without the, uh, PSAP grant, we're able to bring great services to our citizens, fully funded. Thank you.
Chief, has this already been happening, or does it happen tomorrow, or how does it get turned on?
Yep, uh, great question. This is a huge step in it. We need this resolution to take to the cell phone carriers. Uh, we have, Captain Grinwald has his letters ready to go out tomorrow morning to the cell phone carriers. They're very familiar with the process. We've had, uh, we have consultants that are helping us through, through AT&T, and I'll forget all of them, Verkata and, uh, and the like. Uh, have been helping us to transition. Once the carriers agree to, uh, actually tomorrow morning, Captain Grinwald will be on the phone with the state to have our emergency services IP network number generated. Once that number is generated, goes to the carriers. They acknowledge the resolution, the release by the sheriff, and, uh, we were hoping, May twenty-first is our target date. I'll knock on wood because, uh, as always, there's, it's a, just like any project, there's some transition pieces. But we're moving, uh, forward, I think, and we'll work, continue to work collaboratively with Washington County's Dispatch Center as well.
Thanks. Did I see any other questions over here, Alderman Sparts?
So, the way I understand it, the, they're releasing the nine-one-one calls and you'll be answering the ones that are generated in the city. If there's one in Hartford that still goes to the county kind of thing, and it's geographical and...
Yep. Right, it's the advances in technology. Many years ago, you remember this being a source of contention and controversy because it was based on cell phone tower location and pinging, and there wasn't a way to guarantee that you'd get the correct jurisdiction. We all agreed that the best way to do it is make sure those nine-one-one phone calls were answered. Technology has advanced significantly that it, uh, if you search for anything on your phone, it knows where you are. Uh, so we're utilizing those GPS capabilities, uh, to, if you're, if a phone call generates within the city on a nine-one-one cell, uh, it will come to our PSAP.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Well, thank you. We'll move on to ordinance number two and ordinance number three. These kind of go hand in hand. Uh, the first is, uh, an amendment to the twenty-twenty comprehensive plan for the city of West Bend for a change in the recommended land use from two-family residential to single-family residential, consisting of nine-point-eight acres of land located between East Kilborn Drive Extended and Edgewater Drive Extended in the Creekside Subdivision. And then the next ordinance, number three, is to rezone approximately ten-point-one acres of land located at east, east of East Kilborn Avenue Extended and west of Edgewater Drive Extended in the Creekside Subdivision from RD two, two-family residential to RS four, single-family. This was in front of the Plan Commission and, uh, is in front of the Council, obviously, here tonight. One of the questions I'll ask, um, because everyone might be wondering, why is it slightly different acreage? But Jim's gonna answer that as he presents, so go ahead, Jim.
Absolutely. So tonight, we're asking the Council to consider these two ordinances to change both land use and zoning. Um, required to have both our, both our land use and zoning to be, um, coordinated in, for, um, zoning purposes. Uh, so we're asking the, um, Council to look at these, uh, two ordinances. Essentially, the developer asked to change the land use to, from two-family, which was used as a transition area, uh, from the multi-family to the resident, or to the single-family. They've asked to change that to a single-family just to make that area kind of fit in a little bit better with the rest of the neighborhood, um, for that development. Um, staff has reviewed that and found it to be an unacceptable transition and change. Um, so we've recommended approval to the Plan Commission. They, in fact, endorsed the, um, changes for, with the resolution approval. They, in fact, endorsed the changes for, with the resolution approval for both the land use and the zoning. The reason why we have the two different acreages is that the land use, how our plan is, it goes to the, basically, the property areas. We exclude the right of ways for the, you know, for the land use plans that we have. And the zoning, actually, we zone property to the center line of the road. So that's why there's a slight difference between the two acreages.
Great, thank you. Before I entertain a motion on these two, let's just ask, ask any questions or discussion that you might have. And if there's none, that's okay, too. I'll entertain a motion on the ordinance number two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zinkshaim. A motion and a second to amend the 2020 Comprehensive Plan. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number three, which is the rezoning.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zinkshaim and Alderman Schmidt. Any final discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jim. We'll move into our reports tonight. The bid board met on May 6th. Brett, were you at that meeting?
Yes, I was. It was a, sorry, I come prepared to the tourism. Yeah, it was at the meeting. It was, it was a good meeting. I don't really have much to report outside of the normal, I guess.
Elected new officers, I think, for the year?
Yeah, that's correct. We elected new officers. They ran unopposed. I'm sorry. Basically, we maintained the status quo, the same officers are in place as last time.
Okay, great. I apologize I wasn't there, but we'll make sure that Rebecca Surwat is there for the next meeting and introduce her as a new Plan Commission member, or bid board member, excuse me. Plan Commission on May 6th. John, you want to take that one?
I was there electronically. We had a public hearing in action on the land use and zoning at Creekside subdivision, which we just approved tonight. It passed that night, too, so that's a good thing. We reviewed a concept plan for Rainbow Lakes. We provided feedback to the developer, and he'll work with city staff to come up with an updated plan and present that for formal acceptance. So that's in, that's back on the table and being worked on up on Rainbow Lakes. So there's some good things happening there. And we received a request to set a public hearing regarding land use and zoning changes on the west side of Stratford Lane. That's across from the Barton Ballparks. That's the old, actually, the old parking lots for the ballparks, when we had leagues up there in the old days. The developer presented a concept, and we moved towards, forwards on scheduling a public hearing, which will be either June or July, depending when the city staff can get the notice out.
Perfect, thank you. How about the Tourism Commission on May 6th? Who's doing that one?
Yeah, I was gonna...
Okay.
Sorry, in my mind, I was prepared to talk about that and...
That's all right.
But yeah, we had a good meeting of the Tourism Committee, and we actually awarded some grants for the fall/winter event grants, whatever. And one, so we, we had some great presentations from several groups, and actually, most of the groups that presented were actually awarded. So there was a grant to Chicks for a Cause, Bach Fest, West Bend Downtown Association for their Chocolate Around the Bend, and the Downtown Association for Winter on Main. And we gave a additional award, a significant award to the Museum of Wisconsin Art to commemorate a really exciting exhibit they're having on Frank Lloyd Wright, some of his furniture and other architectural things. From my understanding, there's going to be some pieces that I've never before seen, been seen on display at this. So we, we kind of mutually agreed that, you know, this would be something very significant for West Bend and likely to bring out a lot of outside tourism, just to see this from academic and other communities and stuff. So that was pretty exciting. We also elected a new, a new board, and though I, I understand there, at least one person is stepping down, so we're going to have to reconfigure that. The vice chair is stepping down. Other than that, yeah, it was, it was, it's exciting and a lot of things to come for West Bend.
Great, thank you. Administrator's report. Chief.
I'll keep it brief. Just thanks to our department head team. We had a fantastic department head meeting this past Wednesday, very collaborative and really some great discussion. I'm thankful to this board here for giving me the opportunity to really be educated. I'm learning a tremendous amount that, I think we're all siloed, I'm learning a tremendous amount. I'm very, very impressed with the team that helps keep our city running forward, so I'm very at them. I know the team is all very much looking forward to finding out about your discussion at the end of this meeting. So, thanks.
All right, thank you, Chief. Any other person reports tonight? No? All right. I was hoping Mike Yent should be here tonight, but hopefully I get this right. We're going to open the Westbury Bank Aqua Park on the last day of school, which is Friday, June 6th, and there's going to be a big party at the Beach House. I think he's, Mike's got a band coming and a beer garden. And tickets for the Aqua Park are already on sale and have been selling tickets through the Parks, Rec, and Forestry Department. If you haven't been down there yet, it is installed, and it is quite impressive. And I believe it's anyone from the age of six and up can be out there and play on it, including all of us someday. So I will be out of town that weekend. I'm not going to be out there playing on it that weekend, but I look forward to trying it out. It looks really, really cool. So the Memorial Day Parade is obviously coming up on Memorial Day. I really don't participate in the parade. I hand out American flags ahead of the parade. I'm not a vet and believe that that parade should not be a political type of an event, and I think the parade organizers appreciate that. But I will be there for the parade, handing out some flags ahead of the parade, and we've got a really good speaker that'll be up in Veterans Square after the parade, so stick around for that. He was an Army, Army Colonel? Army Colonel. And he spoke at our Tuesday morning rotary last week, and he's very, very impressive. He's got a career now in leadership and, and helping out businesses. He's kind of a motivational speaker as well. He's, he's very good. So as a city, we're really trying to promote that. The Westman Community Foundation put some money towards it and found him, and so we'll pray for good weather on Memorial Day for a good parade and then stay for the speaker. That's all I have. Alderman Butchlick?
Joe, I'd just like to add to that. As a vet and marching in the parade, our, our group really appreciates you doing that because it's really cool when we come by, they're all waving their American flags, and it gives us, gets us right here in the heart. So we appreciate you doing that.
I wish I could say I started that tradition, but that started long before me. I think Chief Moiler actually was the one who started that tradition, so I appreciate you saying that. Anything else that comes to mind? If not, we're at the end of our agenda. We have an item that may be appropriate for closed session tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C, which is considering employment promotion, compensation, or, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And this is to review the candidates for our open city administrator position.
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderwoman Sizer. Any questions, comments, discussion? I will call the roll. Alderwoman Sizer. Alderman Sternig.
Aye.
Alderman Engelking.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Zinkshaim.
Aye.
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Sparts. Alderman Burquist.
Aye.
We are now in closed session, and we will not reconvene after this closed session, so we will adjourn our common council meeting from our closed session tonight. Thank you.